Sign up sheets, please. Okay, is there anybody out there who hasn't signed up to speak on either non-agenda items or items? Now's your chance. Okay. All right. Let's get started. Jack? Jack, are you here tonight? Jack Joyce? Okay. All right, here we go. It is now 6:30. I call the Castle Hills Special Meeting, City Council Meeting, to order and determine whether a quorum is present. A quorum is present. Invocation tonight will be by Mr. Michael Pinkston.
Let's pray together.
For a change.
Heavenly Father, we want to thank you so much for the city leaders, all these neighbors and friends who are gathered here tonight. This is a hard work meeting, just nailing down this budget. I just pray you'd give the mayor and the council wisdom to see what they need to see, know what they need to know, say what they need to say, listen to the citizens, and in the end, just have the courage to do the right thing. And we're just depending on them and their decisions to make this city a better place than it already is, and the amazing place it is, and to take care of all our staff, our police, our fire department, all the people that depend on us, and particularly the residents. So just let your blessing land on this, on this meeting, and your favor on this city, and we just thank you for living here. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. This evening, let's have Mr. Wagner. Will you be glad to, will you do the pledge for us, please?
Thank you, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Wayne. I thought we had a missing flag. It's going to fill out a police report. All right. Here we go. Acknowledgements and presentations, there is none, but I think, did you want to do that now? Yeah, let's go ahead and do that now, get it out of the way.
I was asked to go ahead and announce that the National Night Out is coming up on October the 2nd. It's a Tuesday evening. So far, we have 11 people hosting parties, which I've heard is a record for this time this year. I'm not sure if that's correct, Lieutenant Wagner, but we have 11 people hosting parties. They're taking place on Sunflower, Caladium, Fox Hall, Hurwick, Sir Arthur, Cotillion. We have two parties on Glen Tower, or maybe they're just combining between their homes. Another party on Hurwick, Shalimar, Riviera, and Elizabeth Ann. Is it too late to sign up if someone wants to contact you, Lieutenant Wagner?
No, ma'am, it's not. I have a church inform that if anyone is interested in hosting the National Night Out party.
So yes, if anyone would like to host a party for their block, I highly encourage you to do it. It's a wonderful evening to get to know your neighbors and to get to know people here in the city. So go ahead, and if you feel like hosting a party, please contact Lieutenant Wagner, and let's get on the list, and I can't wait to see all you guys on October the 2nd. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. McCormick, did you have anything to add to this on the announcement, sir? Thank you. Okay. Ms. McGlynn, did you have anything to announce, ma'am?
I'll reiterate, please participate in National Night Out. I look forward to coming around and seeing everyone at their parties.
Thank you. Ms. Winger? Mr. Gregory? Okay. This year, I'm going to host a party. I hope someone comes. And what I did was, I had several restaurants contact me, and besides whatever I do, I am going to invite any restaurant that wants to come, and we'll set up in my driveway. We will have, in case anybody gets hot, I will have my RV out there so you can cool off. There might be some refreshments in there, you never know. So with that said, I would invite everyone to come by if they get a chance. Okay. Let's move on to the next item. The next item is a public hearing, which is to consider and act upon recommendations from the ARC Citizens to be Heard. Okay, that's good. Citizens to be Heard. Thanks, ladies. On non-agenda items, let's go to the first person, and that would be John Kenny.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I just wanted to make a few comments. I'm John Kenny, 103 Briar Cliff. I just wanted to make a few comments. I haven't been attending the meetings regularly, but I watch them regularly online. And I was really amazed with the discussion last week regarding drainage and the fixing of Banyon. As much as I agree with Mr. Gregory that that street floods, and we had a few years back, a car that got hung up on the barriers, it needs to be fixed. What I don't understand is a 40-minute discussion on loss of life in floods, yet the week before, a 40-minute discussion on trees so the fire trucks could get in to put out a house fire, which would save not just the person, but all of their belongings. And we decided, we love trees. I love trees. I think trees are beautiful. But I don't understand how death from a drainage or a flood is more important than death from a fire. Why are they not equal? I really wish somebody could explain that to me. You know, over the last 10 years of me living here in Castle Hills, and me being active in the city in the last five years, I've seen different mayors, I've seen different council members. I've seen bickering, not just from this council, but prior councils. It needs to stop. I absolutely agreed with Mr. McCormick's comments in the Castle Hills Reporter. The bickering has got to stop. Civility has got to take over. I said it once before, I grew up in the most politically corrupt city in the nation, Chicago. This isn't Chicago. This is Castle Hills. All four, or 2.3 square miles of us and 4,300 members, residents of us. We don't need to be the Trumps and Pelosi's and the Democrats versus Republicans that we see every day in Congress. We need to get along. There are things that need to be done, and this council needs to step up and start doing things rather than attacking each other for the sake of attacking each other.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Mr. Rappley, will you get with Mr. Kenny on the fire and flooding plans that we have? Dover, if you want to sit into that meeting, that would be nice, to understand the evacuation proceedings. Okay, let's move on to the next person, who is Pamela Ferris.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff members, and residents. Pamela Ferris, 209 Hurwick Drive. Can you hear me? As a longstanding Castle Hills resident, I've attended a great many city council meetings. Over the years, one aggravating issue has been perpetual, and that's been the inability of those seated on the dais to properly and consistently use their microphones. How many times during the course of any one meeting are one or more of you reminded to turn your microphone on, to speak up, or to speak into the microphone? And yet, you still have not gotten the message. By our attendance alone, we, the audience, are signaling our interest in hearing what the council has to say, your resolutions, all your agenda discussions, your motions, and your votes. Additionally, since all the meetings are broadcast over Ustream, it's even more critical that our fellow residents not be excluded and can hear what is being discussed. To remedy this situation, I would like to propose a solution. Make all microphones on the dais live when the council meetings are in session. Easy remedy, positive outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. Mr. Rappley, would you get with Ms. Ferris on the plans in the future of our audio, please? Thank you. All right, let's go to John Squire.
Thank you, Mayor. John Squire, 28, Chattington Court. I'd like to give you all an opinion on a concern that I have. As you all know, previously, my share concerns about Leslie Winger maliciously lying about me, but more importantly, absolutely refusing to apologize when given the opportunity by her mayor. But that's what I'm here to talk about this evening. On September 14th, Ms. Winger sent out another one of her political emails that she signed as an elected official. The sending this email was confirmed to me by the public response that was posted on Nextdoor by Mr. Frank Paul. I bring this up in that as a Castle Hills resident, I never received the email from Ms. Winger. Since her election has a place for aldermen, I've not received any emails from her. It is my understanding that as an elected official, Ms. Winger is supposed to represent all the citizens of Castle Hills. In this lady's email, Ms. Winger specifically asked for her selected citizens to show up at this budget meeting and voice their concerns. Well, I have a concern. My concern is that she only appears to be sending these emails to a select group of residents, her supporters, which I would guess is to push forward her agenda. In my opinion, Ms. Winger is specifically excluding the rest of the citizens of our city. This may be an attempt to influence council solely for her benefit. In the past, I used to receive emails from Ms. Winger. I am also aware of others who used to receive emails from her. I never asked her to be removed from receiving these emails, and to my understanding, neither did these other residents. So it seems likely to me that as an elected official for our entire city, Leslie Winger cherry picks who she sends out political emails to, and more importantly, who she does not. I am not sure of the legalities of this practice, but Ms. Winger, as an at-large elected official, may be practicing a form of citizen discrimination by excluding and/or eliminating specific residents from information shared with select others. At the very least, this is unethical and unscrupulous practice that should not be supported by our elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, next on the list is Mike Flynn.
Mike Flynn, 111 Amerson Lane. I just want to, I'm here to comment on Mr. McCormick's article in the Reporter. I'd like to commend him for his article, and I agree that his, an effort is needed within this city to promote civility. I hope that Mr. McCormick will support that as far as his own, his own followers. And I would like to add that name-calling is counterproductive, and it's the last resort of a person that can't win the argument on merits. Intelligent people can agree to disagree and still be civil. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Okay. Laverne Jappett. Okay. And last but not least, Robbie Casey.
I'm Robbie Casey, 144 Castle Hills Drive, and good evening, Council and Mayor. I know you get tired of seeing me up here, but I'm, I was not in San Antonio a week or so ago, but I was seated at a table with 14 engineers and developers. And sitting there, listening to them have a discussion on the development going on, developments going on in San Antonio. The Castle Hills name came up, and one looked to the other and said, you know, that's the most difficult little city I've ever tried to do business with. So I think that we really need to reach out to these people. There was a group of us that were on a master plan committee. We met every Saturday. We took our Saturdays to have a meeting to discuss, to do something. Nothing ever happened. What happened to it? We had a committee chairman, but nothing, I've never heard another word about it. So we need to look at that and see if we can't do something to move forward. And as everyone else has said, we don't want to come up to a council meeting and listen to bickering and disagreement, and one trying to outdo the other one and pick on the city manager. I don't think any of you all probably have an education or a degree in finance or city management. And we have a very good city manager now, Mr. Rappley, that we should be proud of. And instead of talking down to him and trying to find everything that he's doing wrong, what we should be doing is encouraging him, encouraging him, and asking him, what can we do to help him? I mean, we need to be a happy, small city and work together. This, coming up here to this council meeting is a dread because we're thinking, okay, are we going to sit here for four hours and listen to y'all bicker between each other? No, the citizens do not like that. And there's no reason that you should try to, some of you condemn our city manager or any of our employees, does that matter? If there's any condemnation, then it's up to the city manager. You need to back off and let him do his job. That's what he was hired to, and you are not educated enough to do his job. That's the reason we hire him and we pay him. Now, I'm talking to the ones that know who's been doing it. So you can't tell a professional how to do his job when you don't know how to do it yourself. Shame on all of us that do that. So give the city manager credit and give him encouragement. And if we're on a committee and we meet, let's have the results of it. So what I'm saying is, we should all think positive. Don't try to condemn someone. We're a small city. We should be out, all of you should be out, trying to build our tax base, trying to make everyone know how happy we are here and what a great place it is to live, and what a great place it would be to have a business, and what can we do to help them? I don't like to come to these meetings and listen to this, and I don't think you all feel good after the meetings. So all I'm saying is, let's all work together and promote Castle Hills and be happy, and put a little love in your heart, and look at your neighbor and tell them, we're glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Robbie. Hang on, let me turn this. Yeah, I think I got it. Thank you. Okay. That's it on the non-agenda items. Okay, we're going to move, we're going to move on here to the public hearing. Consider and act upon recommendations from Architectural Review Committee regarding an application for the Rapid Express Car Wash at 2259 Northwest Military Highway. Legal description CB5778, Lot 19, Slimp Subdivision. For the proposal, proposed addition of a installation of a new central vacuum system and canopy. Construction of two CMU enclosures for vacuum system and a dumpster. Installation of the two pay stations. Installation of a tower to enclose new water storage tanks. Installation of a new sign at the same height and size as the existing, but in new location. And removal of the following protected trees. Three oak trees, one American elm, and two hackberry trees planted, planting of replacement trees involved. Mr. Joyce, let's go ahead and start this. It is now 6:51. Mr. Joyce, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Council members. Jack Joyce from the Architecture Review Committee. We had our meeting last night, and we did look at, you know, the three major pieces of the proposal. There were the building, the trees, and the sign. And we had a lot of good discussion. There were a lot of questions, a lot of interchange with the applicant and his contractor. But ultimately, the committee believes it's a worthy project, and we believe it's worthy of approval. We recommend that you all approve it. Our vote was unanimous. I guess the only stipulation in our recommendation was that with respect to the replacement trees that the group has offered to put in, which we think is a really good thing, that they would be required to keep them alive for a couple of years. There's nothing in our ordinance that requires anything like that, but since they offered to do it, we thought it'd be a good idea to make sure that those trees do survive in this climate that we have here for a period of two years. So anyway, I'm happy to answer whatever questions you all may have.
Mr., uh, thank you, Mr. Joyce. Let's get started here. This is a public hearing. Mr. McCormick, did you have anything to say before we let the public speak?
No, as it happens, I went to the hearing last night with the ARC committee, and I've heard the presentation, so I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Ms. Scott?
I watched the ARC committee meeting last night. After it was over, I viewed it later in the evening, and I just want to say thank you for recycling 70% of your water usage. I think that is, is very commendable. And like I said, I saw the ARC meeting, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McGlynn, did you have any comments for Mr. Joyce before we turn it over to the public, please?
No, I've read through everything that was submitted to the city that ARC reviewed, and I've read through the additional packet that we received this evening with the PowerPoint of some of the benefits that they provide to the community, and I would be really excited to have them, I'm really excited to have them in our city.
Thank you. Ms. Winger, did you have any questions for the chairman?
Yeah, according to this plant list here, you have four Monterey Oaks that are coming down, is that correct? I assume that's why they're on here.
Would you like the applicant to answer that question, Ms. Winger? Would you prefer that I answer that question?
I'm sorry?
Would you like the applicant to answer that question, or you prefer that I answer the question?
No, I'm asking you. It's on, it's on here. Did you approve the removal of four Monterey Oaks?
We did.
And these are, you know, nine feet to 10 feet high, and then you also approved three cedar elms?
I thought that was an American elm that was being taken out.
Well, it says cedar elm here. I'm just asking. It says cedar elm.
Okay, I thought these cedar elms were the replacement trees.
Okay, well, are they going to be replaced with trees of similar size, or are they going to be replaced with brand-new?
No, they'll be replaced with smaller trees, but trees of a size, I believe it's a three-inch caliber, which are believed by arborists to be a good size, that they could take well, take root well, and grow well over time. It's a good size. Not the same size, but it's a good size.
Yeah, well, we have, you know, two trees that we planted out in front that were supposed to be, you know, growing fast, and you see how big they are, and they were planted 20 years ago. So I have a little bit concerned about that. That's, you know, I understand if something has to be moved, but I am a little bit concerned about taking down that many sizable trees, and yet, that's what you approved, right?
We did approve that. I think the group felt that they were way in the back of the property and didn't particularly benefit anybody. It's a, it's a commercial lot surrounded by commercial areas, and a lot that's vacant to the, to the north, I guess it is. So the group, although they're nice trees, no question about it, but the group felt that the trade-off was worth it because the applicant had offered to replace nice trees.
But if they're in the back of the property, is that where they're going to put the new trees?
I think some of them will be in the new, in the back, Ms. Winger, but some of them will be along the edge between the car wash and the shopping center to the south.
So your feeling is that the new trees are going to be more visible for the public?
Yes, right.
But if they're, I guess my question is, if they're in the back, what are they disturbing? Are they impacting what the owners want to do with the property?
Yes, the drive is going to expand a little bit, and so that expansion, unfortunately, the trees are in the way of the expansion of the drive.
And that's seven sizable trees?
Yes, right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Paul, did you have something to say?
Well, at this time, you're conducting the public hearing, so generally, you would just ask the public to comment on the application, and you had staff present, present their facts and their basis for their decision.
Okay.
After you close the public hearing, then you all can discuss and deliberate on the proposed action that you'd like to take.
Okay, all right, we can do that. Sorry, Doug, just hold that question.
I also understand the owner-applicant is here to present as well.
Sure. Jack, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's my mistake. Did you have anything to say, sir, the owner-applicant of the car wash? Or the applicant of the car wash?
All I wanted to say was, we went to the ARC yesterday, and we answered the questions about... I'm sorry?
Could you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Amad Jaffarelli. I'm the owner, operator of the car wash. We went to the ARC committee yesterday. We went to the ARC committee yesterday, and we've answered all the questions. There was no requirement of us to replace the trees, but we wanted to. I'm a tree hugger. I, I don't like anything dying on me, and I want to make sure that it's green and it looks good, and we're part of the community. So, so we recommended beforehand that we would replace four trees, four or seven trees, but there are some really old dead trees in the back that may have to come out, too, once we clean it up, and we will replace them with live trees, and that was suggested in our, by George yesterday. A little bit about the car wash. The car wash that's been there is, was built in the 80s. It's old, and we are remodeling it to make it new, bring it back to the, to this time. It's remodeled with, just to tell us about today's time with new equipment and, and water savers. We've been members of the Southwest Car Wash Association for 15 years and water savers, and that's why 70% of our waters recycle. We're also members of the... We're also members of the International Car Wash Association. Plus, they invite only 10 car washes in the country to come visit to have the Excellence Summit, and we're one of the members. We built, we own 11 to 14 car washes in, in the state of Texas, and we pretty much build in small towns. And our, all our accreditations are right here on the front page. I had a PowerPoint, but that's okay. I don't need it. Those who want to see it. We've got car washes in the city of Cypress, Spring, Bernie, Victoria, Bastrop, Kyle, Mission, Fullshire, and in San Antonio, besides Northwest Military, we're building another car wash in the Dominion, on I-10 and Dominion Drive. I think each one of y'all have a pamphlet that y'all can follow. And then on page three.
Excuse me just a minute, sir. Mr. Rapley, by the end of the month, will you have a proposal ready for an audio system? I'm getting tired of the residents talking about it and also up here on the dais. This is embarrassing. We now are in the 20th century.
Yes, Mayor, I already have a quote.
Thank you. Let's get it implemented and get the council as soon as possible. Sorry to interrupt you, sir. Go ahead.
No worries. And it's a, we are fully automated exterior car wash. Customers will be in and out in less than three minutes. We offer free vacuum to all our customers, with or without a wash. Most of our equipment is top, it's fully automated. It's a 125-foot tunnel. You're, by the time you reach the tunnel and you're out, dry to dry, you're, you're out in three minutes. We recycle our water. And all our employees will be in uniform. We'll have minimum of three employees, two to three employees on the lot. Again, going back to our discussion of landscaping, we will, we, one of the reasons we proposed the trees is, like we said, we want it to be green. We don't like concrete jungles. Benefits to the Castle Hills community. It's a tunnel, it's going to be the only tunnel car wash in 2.3 miles. I just figured that out earlier, that, that's the size of the city. We'll have eight to 10 employees that hopefully will be residents or live there, or kids that go to college. We contribute back to the community, and, and we only do it for nonprofit, and it, this all, oh. This all started with my daughter, who's an ice skater, well, 10, 12 years ago, when she wanted to do a car wash at HEB or a grocery store, and I go, no way. I'm not going to let you stand there in your bathing swimsuit and do a car wash. You're going to come to mine in Cypress, but you're going to work for it. I'll give you a dollar per car for your whole organization. But you're going to clean the towels, you're going to clean the trash, you're going to do the bathrooms, and you're going to put a sign up there, and you're going to stand out there, and you're going to work it out. There's no freebies in my household. So we've done that at all our 14 locations. And we don't advertise that. I mean, we do advertise that, but we don't ever say how much we give out because that's not the, that's not my job. But we, every, every month, we write a check for $300, $400 from each store to the community. I can't read anymore. Okay. We mentioned that we, we recycle 70% of our water. We like to have a great curb appeal. We want all our customers to come from Castle Hills. That's what, that's what, that's how we will survive, and, and has, as long as y'all are happy, we'll do what the community wants. There's something I think I forgot to say. We have always, and I'm sure every car wash does this in the community, but our law enforcements, we, we wash their cars for free. We have at all our 14 locations. And we thank you for your service. We've done it in, closest car wash we have here is Bernie, and if you live there or you've been there, you'll see that it's been done there as well. We always want to say thank you, and I think that's it. I think I messed that up.
Well, thank you. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer. Thank you, Mr. Jaffray. Appreciate it. We'll, we'll have you up if there's any questions from, uh. Okay. Let's move on to the first person signed up for this. Nobody is signed up. Okay, so we'll go, it is now 7:04. Does anybody like to speak that didn't sign up, just in case? Ginger, go ahead.
I just wanted to say I'm so grateful to our city manager and all the employees for running the city so smoothly. I'm, I'm very thankful and very happy to be living here. That's it.
Miss, we're talking about the car wash right now, and it was
Well, I'll be happy to see that arrive as well.
Thank you.
I didn't sign up for the other one. I forgot.
That's okay. We'll put you, we'll ask again.
Ginger Majors, 509 Gladiola.
Thank you, Ginger. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak specifically on the car wash? Hi, Bonnie.
Hi, Tim. Bonnie Hopkey, 111 Amerson. I really miss having a car wash at that location and really hope that you all go ahead and approve that quickly so that Mike's car can get washed, and I'm not getting into a dirty car every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. That's her. That's great. Okay, it is now 7:05, and we're going to close the public hearing. And we're going to pick up where we left off with Mr. Gregory.
I have only one question. What are the hours and days of operation?
Seven days a week, 7 to 7. Mr. Jaffray, I just have one question, and it's, it's not, I want to make sure it's clear. It's not for myself, okay? This is for many people who have asked, and, and, not that I have any of these, okay? Or will be even trying to use them. But apparently, the car wash before gave out these coupons, that they paid for those coupons, and, and what are you going to do, just out of curiosity, it's about the people who, do they, do they go to the other car washes that this company owns?
What I've been told is 80% of the customers who had the prepaid cards were, were paid back, reimbursed.
Oh, okay.
Those who are not reimbursed will make it right.
Gotcha. That's all you can say.
We want to make sure the customers are taken care of, but
Gotcha.
I've been told they were taken care of, but those who are not, just let us know. We'll take care of it.
Okay, it was just some questions that were floating around, and then I thought we might as well go ahead and clear it up while you're here. I'm going to have to chase you down. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, there is nobody, yes, sir?
I, I forgot to add, besides the free vacuums, we do offer free towel services. That means it's still going to be free towels that'll dry your car out, and fragrance, so you really don't have to ever go anywhere.
I like that. Do you do RVs, or? Well, I was just curious.
No RV, no smart cars, okay.
I'd like a discount.
No RVs, no dooleys, nothing bigger than a two-axle.
I, I was just curious. What about smart car? Do you offer a discount? Because
No, it's, I can't charge for a 22-footer either. Extra.
Thank you, Mr. Jaffray.
That's too much to expect, Mr. Mayor. I never get discounts on haircuts either.
Thank you. I'll remember that next time I'm in Looz. Oh, sorry, can I say that? Looz? Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move we accept the recommendation by ARC.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's, uh, any discussion?
As I say, I viewed the presentation last night. I was pretty well pleased with the attitude of management towards the operation of the facility. I think it's going to look very nice when it's completed, and I think the, that placing new trees on the facility grounds will improve the look over just bare concrete. I think it's good of them to do that, since it's not in our statutes, or not in our ordinances to require it. But now that they have offered it, and the, the ARC Committee has recommended an approval conditional on their agreement to keep the trees alive for two years, I'm in favor of that.
Thank you. Was there anybody else that had any discussion before we enter into the vote here? Thank you. All right, all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, sir. And how long is it going to be till you open up? Where's Kit?
No, equip, equipment arrived today. We're about 30 days from the equipment, so we can simultaneously don't do the outside. We were hoping to be open by first week of October, but that's not going to happen.
Well, please let Mr. Rapley know, and we'll see if we can expedite that, as we would do any business, you know, new business coming into town.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll get into the fun stuff. Item two, conduct the second public hearing on the proposed fiscal budget of 2019. And it is now And going to invite the public input, and we'll start with this list we have here, because we have several people signed up. By the way, Minnie, how many people are online? 15, wow. May I have a ping from somebody out there, just to make sure we're getting out there, please? Thank you so much. Okay. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, Council, good evening. I just wanted to reiterate, obviously, over the last few workshops we've had, that this current proposed budget is balanced, transparent, and includes an ending fund balance of at least six months of operations. This balanced budget also involve, is based on the current tax rate being maintained to support citywide service levels. As, as we discussed at previous workshops, we revisited areas of operations and personnel, and looked at ways to reallocate dollars after we submitted the proposed budget. Obviously, based on feedback by council, the first meeting we had, public hearing, the first public meeting we had, we discussed and heard from citizens to improve our streets and drainage issues in the community. As a result, I had recommended the reallocation of surplus funds towards streets and drainage improvements, which would be outlined in the presentation in a moment. In my agenda packet, I provided a memo, which provided a final recommendation and recapped our overall budget process over the last month and a half. The preparation of the proposed budget was a lengthy process, which requires the cooperation and input from city council. I would like to extend a sincere thank you for your time and leadership during this budget process and preparation of this proposed budget. I would also like to give special thanks to all the employees who continue to work hard to provide quality services to our residents in the city of Castle Hills. I'm confident this budget prepares the city of Castle Hills for future success as well. With support and dedication of our capable staff, we will ensure that quality services are provided to the citizens of Castle Hills. Again, just to recap, these are the highlights of the budget. When we proposed it on August 8th, ending fund balance and reserve almost six months, current tax rate maintained, balanced budget which supports our service levels, continued providing funding for future capital equipment, provides for additional funding for future radio upgrades for fire, six sets of bunker gear, and programs in funding for the replacement of three HVAC units at City Hall. Originally in the submitted budget, the city manager, myself, proposed a budget that did not recommend a tax increase. However, council did propose a two-six, a two-cent tax increase, which would be $107,366 if adopted. Possible use for these dollars, street maintenance, drainage, or other capital improvements. Again, as I mentioned, we have a rec, final recommendation for reallocation of funded expenditures. Total funds $331,334 to transfer to the supplemental streets and drainage fund. This equates to 4.8% of the budget for reallocation. Reallocation of funds have no impact on services related to public safety, police, fire, and dispatch. Recommendation, a recommendation also involves the elimination of, and reduction of two employees, which are vacant and funded right now, overall bringing our total of employees from 70 to 68 in the city's organization. Here is a list that I provided last week that recounted, recapped the total reallocation and surplus dollars. Again, the project manager position, one-street position, excess fire department salary, that was from a previous budget. COLA being from 3% to 2%. Health insurance rerate, originally programmed in at 20%, once we got the rerate, we are now around 14%, 14.88 to be exact. Remove the digital marquee, City Hall improvements.
Okay. What they want to see is a line-by-line item of, of where the money comes from and not where. One thing I was getting ready to say is, and it's, it's probably not important, but we, we, we put that two cents into the budget. It is not included in this particular surplus of revenue. So, uh, Mr., that is a valid point of order?
Yes, Mayor, it's not included. Those dollars are not included in this budget. That was a proposed increase by council at a prior workshop, August 8th submitted.
Well, it can be confusing.
Sure.
Okay, when you said that we hope, you know, we added two cents to the budget, they're out there saying that we raised taxes. We did not raise taxes.
That's why on the slide here, I said if adopted. So you haven't adopted the proposed tax rate for that increase.
Mr., what would you like, what, what do you feel like you need to see? Do you want to see a line-by-line item of, of the budget, or? Right. Okay, that's, that's what we should have started out with, was it was confusing in the beginning. And when, when we first passed this, Mr. McCormick actually helped us to make sure that if we did need that income while we were doing the budget, that it would be considered. Okay, now I realize there's information floating around the city that said, we raised taxes. We did not raise a single tax. What we did was we took that into consideration is what we did, and Mr. McCormick made the thing, and we all agreed, I believe it was a unanimous vote. Was it not a unanimous vote?
It was 3 to 2, America.
A 3 to 2 vote, that, that it was put in there, but those funds are not included in this particular document. So the 2% is not there. Now, if you'd like to see it recalculated to the point where it is, then I'm sure that Ms. Phelan could, could rework that and let you know if you added that 2% in, what the valuation would be. Two cents, right. He said 2%. I said 2 cents, or I meant 2 cents.
Two cent, Mayor, that if, the total revenue if adopted would be $107,000, which is about $53,000 a cent.
Okay.
For raising of the property tax.
Right, and all we need to do is explain to the public that that 2 cents is not included in the budget that they have, or they're looking at.
It is currently not included. You have not adopted a tax rate.
Correct. Does that help? It's a point of order. It has to be addressed. Sure. Mr. Buehler, would you come up to the mic, please?
William Buehler, 108 Prince Drive. I, I apologize for interrupting the nice presentation that the city manager has given. But my concern, and I only intended to bring it up under the, the comment portion, not to interfere with the presentation here, but that we don't know, I'm not, I'm not internet, I'm not computer literate. And so, unless we've, I'd attended all of the budget meetings, and I did attend some.
Yes, sir.
We don't know what our tax revenue is. Three million dollars, four, four million dollars.
You will when he gets to that slide.
I can't, I can't read what's presented on the board. I can't see it.
Okay. Would you like to step up here? Or, I mean, I'm not, I'm trying to be as respectful as possible.
I can't even see it from here, Your Honor. But anyway, I've, I've spent enough time on it, and I appreciate being recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Buehler.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
There was some material in one of the earlier presentations that included exactly the information that Mr. Buehler expresses an interest in seeing. It shows what the, what, what the income would be, where the expenses would go, and how it would change in each category if we, if we enacted that larger tax increase. The fact is that we haven't enacted that larger tax increase, and it's not included in the current budget, I think is important to Mr. Buehler.
Mr. Rapley, is any of the slides you have coming up show the revenue versus the, anything else? I mean, versus the expenditures?
No, Mayor, not on this slide. Again.
Does any slide that you have coming up have that?
None of the slides that I have in this presentation. In the agenda packet, we provided the revenue and expenditures of all departments and overall general fund.
Minnie, how hard would it be for you to print off some? How many, how long do you think it'd take?
I mean, Mayor, is it more of just a general fund overview? Because we, we have, can make a copy here of this page we have here, which breaks down, again, department expenditures, shows our beginning fund balance and ending fund balance in the proposed budget.
Mr. Mayor, could we take a recess, please?
Sure. Recess, ten minutes. Thank you. Mr. Rapley? Go ahead, sir.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. I think we've got it here that provides the general fund as far as the proposed budget, which indicates the beginning fund balance there at three million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six. Total revenue, six million, nine hundred and seventy-five, zero, two, seven. If you, Chief, can you scroll down on there? As you, as you look, this is the expenses by each department. Can you go down? It's on the, the right-hand side, Chief. There you go. Further down, please. Okay, that's good. Again, as you go down, the proposed total expenses is six million, nine hundred and seventy-five, zero, two, seven. And that leaves the ending fund balance of three million, two hundred and ninety-four, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. Again, the, the dollars in the proposed tax rate, as we mentioned before, are not accounting for in this proposed general fund budget right here. In the original agenda, I mean, excuse me, in the original budget, I had a transmittal memo that provided a breakdown of revenue expenditures. And as I mentioned, the proposed general fund, again, being six million, nine hundred and seventy-five, zero, two, seven, as far as expenditures, and total revenue, six million, nine hundred and seventy-five, zero, two, seven, as indicated on the screen there. I think everybody has copies of revenue and expenditures? Just revenues? If you'd like, Mayor, you can open the public hearing, and we can discuss it afterwards.
Sure. Yeah, it's already open. Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Mr. Buehler, I want to thank you for bringing that up, too. Now I can see the darn thing. Want to ponder that for a little bit before we get started. And then the first person on the list will be Mr. John Kenny. John, you want to give us about thirty seconds and then make your way up to the front, please? Wow, what is this? Looks like a library. Perfect, Minnie. Thank you. Mr. Kenny, anytime you're ready.
Thank you, sir. John Kenny, 103 Briar Cliff. I have one question and then a few comments. And I'll post my question on next door for any council member to respond so that all information is out in the open for all Castle Hills residents. Rather than looking for cuts from a balanced budget, I propose that you use these four-hour, five-hour meetings that you have to discuss out-of-the-box ideas to generate revenue. I believe it was Councilman Gregory that made a comment in the reporter, and once again, I agree, we are not a growing city. We are landlocked, which means you, the council, need to be thinking of alternative revenue sources. Cutting property taxes for those over sixty-five was not a great idea. We know that last year it reduced our taxable in, uh, income by ninety-plus thousand dollars, and I was told that this year it's gonna be right under sixty thousand dollars. I'm gonna ask Mr. Gregory, as a stockbroker, you're the closest thing in the council to a finance person, but explain this to me. This is my one question. Explain how firing the last city attorney, or devil in your words, was caused, whose cost to the city, to the best of my knowledge, was twenty-two hundred dollars a month, justifies the new cost with the new attorneys, and I'm not trying to disparage them. I know Mark Schnall. I worked with Mark on a committee that, like Pamela said, never had any outcome. It was an ordinance review committee, but nothing ever came of that. But explain to me why or how expenditure of sixty-six hundred dollars a month to the city is better than twenty-two hundred dollars a month. And I'm not trying to disparage anybody. Like I said, you're a stockbroker, you're the closest thing to a finance person on the committee, and this pea-brained MBA just doesn't get the math. So, that's my one question. Here's some recommendations. Thinking outside the box. And let me, to give you two examples of something the council did. Prior council did the two big billboards out here off 410. That's generating revenue. That was thinking outside the box. It kind of made one of the churches mad, but they got over it. The passport office, outside-the-box thinking, it's still growing. It just opened. It just started. But it's generating revenue. Those are two examples that the council did do. Here's some other ideas that I could throw at you. If we're gonna cut the budget, why don't we cut the golden egg of two garbage pickups per week? That might give Rick's crew a time to do some other things in the city. I talked with Chief Siemens the other day, and I said, hey, Johnny, we've got that cart, that's the speed cart that has the radar on it. Couldn't we put a camera on that to catch the speeders and, and issue tickets? And Johnny said, we could, but, I said, what's the but? The but is to make it legal, an officer of the law has to review all the video to make sure that it is illegal, what this person was doing. This budget, your recommendation, is to cut the police department. Well, if you didn't cut the police department and you let Johnny fill the position, there's a there's a revenue source that you haven't even discussed. That's just one. There's a grant out there for water and drainage that I called personally today to the federal agency to find out if we were eligible. We are. That's... I know, you guys are too busy to do this. Let the citizens do it. We talked about red light cameras also, but you know what? Once again, the red light cameras. And I'll be honest, where's Johnny? Oh, never. He had to leave. Wayne, I ran the red light coming here tonight, right there at Lemonwood Northwest Military. There's a good place for a camera. But once again, we can't put those there because we don't have the police officers dedicated to review those videos. My last example, something that we're doing with community organization. I spoke about it once before, the King William Fair. Now, I know there are a lot of people in Castle Hills that don't like the King William Fair, don't want our Fiesta to become the King William Fair, but let me just tell you one point. In 2016, and I have to use that number because I met with them last year in 2017. In 2016, they had forty thousand people in one day. One day, that's all it was. King William Fair is not a week long. It's a one-day event. They charge fifteen dollars per person to get in. Can anybody do the math for me, what they generated? Six hundred thousand dollars in one day. Just something to think about.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the list is William Bueller.
William Bueller, 108 Prins Drive, resident of Castle Hill since about 1954. I wanted to apologize to the city manager for interrupting his nice presentation, and I do consider with the handout that we do have a whole lot more transparency than we did with the original handout that we were provided. But I think that more transparency should have been present during our budget hearings. Also, I'm not computer literate, and so I only find out information from the recorder or reporter, whatever comes, and the other publication that comes occasionally. And I really think we need more communication with the senior citizens who are not computer literate and have a way of knowing what's going on. I do appreciate, though, council comments and the mayor's column. As far as the budget is concerned, I haven't had an opportunity to examine it in detail, but from the few budget hearings that I attended, I'm still concerned that we want to spend a whole lot of money on Banyon, which is a flooding problem, a hazard. But my recollection is that perhaps thirty years ago, we did a engineering report. We re-engineered it, lowered the level of Carroll Wood, lowered the level of Banyon to carry the water expected for a fifty-year flood or a hundred-year flood, but we didn't take into account all of the water that the city of San Antonio is pouring upon us. And if we do additional engineering now at this time on Carroll Wood and Banyon and spend perhaps thirty million dollars, I've heard anywhere from six million to thirty million. I don't know what it's actually going to amount to. Unless we stop the city of San Antonio sending all its water to us, and additional water, in another twenty years, we're going to have additional flooding. It's just going to build up. Those are my only additional comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. I appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to Mr. John Squire.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, John Squire, 208 Channing Court. I'll keep this brief. Just wanted to congratulate Mr. Rapley on putting together a very admirable budget that's obviously balanced, because it's by law, it has to be. We all know that. But through his work, through his short time here, he's put together a hell of a surplus that can be used for streets and drainage. And I, for one, am a huge proponent of getting our streets repaired, maintained, obviously, too. And for him to go ahead and come up with three-hundred-and-thirty-plus thousand dollars, I think that's... I'll wait till you all are done. I guess Mr. Winger will not pay attention to the citizens. Thank you. So I just want to congratulate Mr. Rapley on what he has put together. Very good experience, expertise. We're getting the benefit of it. And, most important, no loss of services to the citizens. Finally, I just wanted to mention, as far as the proposed two-cent tax increase. I do believe that the two-cent tax increase is unwarranted this time. I think we should maintain our current tax rate until we have specific items that that two-cent tax increase would be allocated for. The other option going forward, and council does have the authority to do this, is a, would be a potential loan, an interim loan that you all can authorize that can be handled, you know, through obligating some other forms of revenue in case we do get a project that is appropriate for the use of that. And so, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Squire. Next on the list, we have Mike Flynn.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to be heard. My name is Mike Flynn. I reside at 111 Amerson Lane. I'm here tonight to express my concern regarding our Castle Hill city budget, specifically that efforts to eliminate or not fund certain positions may be short-sighted. While I understand that nobody likes paying taxes, doing so is a civic obligation, and cutting services to reduce taxes does not necessarily represent fiscal responsibility. I suspect that the same rationale was used by past city councils to justify not maintaining our streets. I don't know who the people were that made those decisions, but we can all see the result of that logic. A software accounting program, which had already been purchased and for which some staff had already been trained, was canceled by this council. This system likely would have reduced costs in the long run by increasing accounting efficiency and reducing errors. Instead, those funds used to purchase the software were subsequently wasted, and additional five-thousand-dollar contract cancellation fee was assessed. Similarly, our longtime city attorney was recently fired. This not only resulted in loss of continuity, but as my understanding is that the replacement contract for a new attorney is over three times more expensive. The city council also believes that a permit clerk position is not needed. Eliminating this position would likely slow the collection of fees in the way of revenue. Finally, I've heard that certain members of the council do not want to fund the position of assistant fire chief, although this position is required by city ordinance, and have even suggested contracting out the fire department's activities. If we really want to cut costs with the fire department, why don't we extend the idea to its logical conclusion and start a volunteer fire department? Then instead of being taxed, we could have community fundraisers like pancake breakfasts, wild game dinners, barbecue, and cake walks. The only drawback I see to that idea is that we might be short of able-bodied volunteers, since most of our residents are elderly. I believe that government governs best, it governs least. While our population may have declined, the needs of our city have not. Beside the street and drainage issues, we have the same number of structures that need to be protected from fire. Has our crime rate declined in correlation with our population? I agree with Mr. Gregory, the money belongs to the taxpayer, and that governments tend to grow. But it's not like we're trying to build a wall around the city to keep non-residents out or that we are painting rainbow-colored crosswalks in our streets. We are trying to maintain basic services. If a person does not want to pay taxes or maintain city services, they should move to the country where they can install a septic tank, water well, and solar panels for energy. They can also provide for their own self-defense. Of course, they would also have to maintain their own roads and their fence lines. In closing, I would state that some of these recommendations are fiscally irresponsible. Some might say the recommendations are penny-wise and pound foolish. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Okay, next on the list is Bonnie Hopkey.
Bonnie Hopkey, 111 Amerson, Mayor, Council, Mr. Rapley, Department Heads. I'd first like to thank the city employees for putting together a budget that, in my opinion, cost-effectively considers the services the city staff provide to the residents and businesses of Castle Hill. I also note that none of the departments increased their personnel over the 2018 level, and our budget did not increase over last year. Yet I've heard it stated publicly, including at the last budget public hearing, that the city should cut positions. Where should those cuts occur? We could contract out the police, fire, and sanitary department, though we'd pay somebody else instead of city employees, resulting in less control. And who will be driving around the neighborhoods between 2:00 and 4:00 a.m. to arrest people stealing our mail, or capture an escaped prisoner at Gladiola and Trillium, or investigate shots heard near Hurwick and Jackson Keller? I hope you never come home and realize that someone broke into your home and may still be in the home, and have to nervously wait outside for more than five minutes for the police to arrive because they are busy handling a bigger crisis somewhere else in the city of San Antonio. Who will put out the barriers when flooding occurs, or rescue those that are being affected by our drainage issues? I hope it's not your home that is on fire or threatened with a fire as three residents in my part of town experienced this past year. And then the fire department, who can't immediately respond because they are somewhere else in the city of San Antonio. We all remember Wedgwood. Will we still get garbage pickup twice a week, weekly brush, leave, and recycling pickup? Who will maintain our community-owned property, manage our animal shelter? And who will operate, maintain, and provide the labor for the tree mulcher and road paver that Ms. Wanger wants to spend tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars to purchase? Or the solar panels that Mr. Gregory suggested the city look into buying? We can't dismiss our city manager or city secretary. I believe they are required for the type of government we have. And we finally have two years of competent and experienced city managers. The permits clerk, hmm, city revenue comes from people who are required to get permits for everything from tree trimming to major home remodels. I think that's an important job, especially given all the remodeling that's going on in the city. Have you been to City Hall to see the line of contractors waiting for permits? I hope that the projects that you plan to do are not delayed because council decided we didn't need a permit clerk. Council ordered the city manager to terminate the financial software contract. As far as I know, there has been no discussion to look into a different software package. During the last budget hearing, I heard Ms. Wanger comment about something we have in our budget that we didn't need in 1998. Please, this is 2018. Can we, as a city, please come into the 21st century? No business operates the same as it did in 1998. Cost of living increases. There was a discussion about freezing, at the last meeting, about freezing increases. I work for a small business of seventy people. At a minimum, we give our employees a 2% cost of living increase each year. Am I done?
Mr. Paul, would you like to give up your time for Ms... or would anybody... There's one person signed up that's Mr. Paul, to give up their time. Okay. You okay with that, council? Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. At a minimum, we give our employees a 2% cost of living increase each year. Why? Because we value them and their contribution to our business, and we don't want to have to... We don't want to train them and then have them go work for somebody else that will pay them more. Did you all look at salary surveys for the labor categories employed by the city? There is no doubt that streets and drainage are an issue. We've been talking about it for at least six years. The city spent money on a technology and developed plans to identify the areas of the city with the worst streets and drainage problems. Those plans seem to be sitting on the shelf. I hope they're being used as a starting point for the new capital improvement plan. We all know, we've started to see street and drainage repairs, but as been stated, they seem to have stalled. Some of the issues may be waiting for SAWs, and I get that. However, I would like to see a monthly report at the city council meeting on the progress we are making in addressing the approved street and drainage projects. If nothing has been done, a description of the holdups and the actions that are being taken. While I support the concept that the city of San Antonio should assist in funding the solutions to our drainage issues, we've been talking about that for years, too. And regardless of how many trips are made to Austin or downtown San Antonio, there has been no progress in getting them to take responsibility. Are we going to continue to have our residents experience flooding in their homes while we wait for San Antonio to contribute their fair share to the problem? I support those projects that were previously approved by council and the proposal from Banyon, but as I stated at the last public meeting, I'm concerned that the city is not looking to hire an in-house professional project engineer slash project manager to oversee those projects. In the past, the city had issues because personnel that lacked the required skill sets were managing our construction projects. Work was shadowly done. Residents complained. Projects took longer than scheduled. We pay a professional engineering company to design these projects, estimate their costs, and oversee construction. But when issues arise, those issues must be resolved by the project owner, the city, and not our paid outside engineers. Mr. Rapley is a senior manager, a city manager. He is not a registered civil engineer. Council is made up of lawyers, educators, and financial people, not an engineer among you. Please don't believe that you can act as engineers or project managers or know the processes associated with construction projects. Finally, and this is, I swear it'll be my last thing, as a resident of Castle Hills, I have come to expect a level of service from our city. I don't fear, and I'm not opposed to change, but I also know I don't want my life to be the same as it was in 1998. I know it's my money, and I'm willing to pay for those services that I value, not only for me and my family, but for those of you whose tax rates are frozen and won't contribute one additional slim dime to retain the services we all take for granted or fix the drainage and street issues that we spend so much time talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkey. Okay, last on the list is Mr. Frank Paul. I don't know, Frank. We can take a ten-man break if you want. That's a joke. I'm just kidding.
I just want to make a comment about a couple of our council people keep saying we have forty-one hundred people, forty-two hundred people. We haven't grown. We lost 20%. That's correct. We have. But look what's grown around us. We're not a little city that we can move out to West Texas and have Andy Taylor and Barney Fife and one bullet in his gun and take care of everything. I'm really concerned about any thought that we have about doing anything about reducing our safety and our police and fire departments. It's just, either we're a city or we're not a city. The budget, again, ditto some of the people said a while ago. I think they've done a great job putting this together. Unfortunately, we have a lot more infrastructure issues than we do right now on money. But they've cut the budget. They've done many things. Forty-two hundred people sleep here at night. We're probably a city of about 250,000. They go through here, ram through here, causes problems with our citizens, thefts, you name it. Chief, how many citizens of Castle Hills have you arrested? I guess then it doesn't matter if we're 3,000 or 4,000. It's where we're located, and the issues that we have are, in fact, created by outside. But we have outside. And just because we lost 20% of our population is irrelevant to the needs and to the happenings around our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. All right. We have concluded with the people that were signed up. Let me turn this darn thing off. Okay. All right. So that was the hearing. Is there anyone here? John? Tim, James. James, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jim, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, counsel.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see who was back there.
Yeah, I'm blinding you with my head. My name is Jim Gaines, I live at 503 Antler Drive. I am here to make a plea for Antler Drive. I have a champion on the council. Douglas Gregory has been a champion, working with me to hopefully get our street fixed. In the past, it's been an inconvenience, but recently I have seen some very dangerous public safety situations happen on my street. I saw a walker, a lot of us walk in the neighborhood for exercise, trip and fall into one of the divots in the street. I see school buses coming down the street right in front of my house waving back and forth because of the bumps. I personally was almost hit up at the top of Antler, which we call Lake Antler when it rains, because water collects there and collects there and collects there. Someone came around the corner and almost hit me, hit that water full speed and almost ran right into me. I know I've got Mr. Gregory, I'm asking for the rest of you to help Antler Drive. I know we've got some surplus. We don't expect it all, but even just a little bit would help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Was there anybody else who didn't sign up? Yes, sir. Quentin?
Evening, counsel. Quentin Baker from 304 Fox Hall Lane. Looking at the handout that was just provided, just have one question, that's on the revenue line. And I note that the 2018 adopted budget versus the ending is about 500,000, actually 528,000, short on revenue for 2018. And that's a troubling number, over half a million. Are we facing the risk in 2019 that we're going to fall short a half million on our budget? And do we have a contingency in case our revenue doesn't live up to expectations? Right now, it looks like everything in the budget's accounted for, and there's no wiggle room left in case we have a revenue shortfall.
Thank you, Quentin. Laura, would you stay there, Quentin, just in case, sir?
So, the question he brought up is a valid question, and we talked about it several meetings ago. There are line items in your current budget that are not revenue line items that are really considered a pass-through, that most cities and majority of cities record on their balance sheet. And so those line items were removed, they'll be on the balance sheet, and so it's the court revenue, and I was trying to find the court tax revenue.
If it's a pass-through, then it should come off both revenue and expense sides.
We did, exactly. Yes, sir. And so court tax revenue in the current 2018 budget is 380,000. That line item will no longer be showing. You also have sales and use tax for 38,000, I believe. Also Lineburger, which is up towards the cop, which is LGB Collections, which is 40,000. So it was a little, just under 500,000, almost. So those two sides are both removed, which is why it does look like, when you look at the 2018 budget to the 2019, there's that large difference. If you look at the column I did do in this packet, there is a column that's called "projected", and we did remove it to help show that difference.
Very good. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Quentin. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak up? Mr. Trevino?
Mayor, counsel, JR Trevino, 109 South Gardenview. I'll be the first one to say, I'm not a huge fan of paying taxes. I don't think anybody is. That being said, I am more than happy to pay my taxes to the city of Castle Hills to get things done for our city. I understand that we live in what I consider a premium community, and I'm fine paying a premium price to maintain our premium services. That being said, I am not a fan of paying those taxes when there is a council that, in my opinion, is squandering those taxes. You know, I guess I'm going to just get kind of straight to it, and I'm bothered by the fact that some of the personal politics are costing the city more money. Mr. Gregory's been on the council for 15 years, and it's only now that he pushed for the over 65 tax exemption. I would ask, why? Why wait 13, 14, 15 years to push for that? You look at Mr. Brennan. Mr. Brennan was fired. Why? Because he filed a complaint with the district attorney regarding what he considered was some illegal actions. And because of that, he was fired, and now we're going to be paying three times more for legal fees. Nothing against our new counsel, I'm sorry that you stepped into all this, but that is an unnecessary expenditure. And now, we're going to take all that and cut services? I know what Public Works, Police, and Fire go through. They are not in a position to lose any of their personnel. They are understaffed as it is, and they're stretching themselves to do the best they can for our city, because that's what they do.
Thank you, Ms. Trevino.
Okay. We're coming to the end of this, it is now 8:04, I believe. And so we will now close the public hearing. Sure. Let's do a real short five-minute, okay? Just so we can catch our breath here and get started on the... Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if we can find our seats and get down the road. Thank you. All right. Mr. Udomar, it's always good to see you. See you snuck in back there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to shift...
Well, I better call us back to order first, then you can like to do anything you want.
Okay.
You guys are going to miss me. Go ahead.
Are you asking?
Yeah, call us back to order, yeah. Call us back to order at 8:09.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, under new business, I would like to hit number four first to adopt the tax rate. I think we've got to know how much we're going to bring in before we decide what to do. So I'd like to move four, four, three.
You know what, I'm going to go along with that.
You'll need to adopt the budget first, or consider the budget, because it incorporates the tax.
Affects the revenue.
Right, and it affects the revenue.
Oh.
So you need to do the budget first.
Well, the attorney tells me we've got to do the budget first.
I'd like to hear that logic again, please.
I believe it's statutorily required, and it encompasses the tax rate, and it affects the revenue. So you need to adopt the budget first, then you can go on to adopt the tax rate, and then ratify that tax rate.
It's required to do it in that order? That you adopt a budget and then go hunt down the money you need?
Yes.
Only in Texas.
Okay. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, let's go ahead and... On item three, consider an act upon the record of vote on ordinance number 20180918A to adopt the fiscal year 2019 operating budget for the city of Castle Hills. This will be a record vote, and may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Subject to discussion, I move that we accept the recommendation on reallocation as presented by Mr. Rapley.
Of course. Yeah, we're going to discussion.
As my first motion on this budget.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second to move into discussion on the...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. By Ms. Winger. Okay, we're going to move into the discussion part of this, and we will start with Mr. Gregory.
Mr. Rapley, I have just one question at this time. The excess for our department's salary of $57,000, where does that come from?
That was put into a previous budget when, and I could ask chief to speak to that during the time, because it was done under a previous fire chief. There was dollars added in. Sorry, chief.
That's okay. Mr. Gregory, that was actually put in place initially last year for the assistant chief's position that was funded for six months. It was carried over to this year, because at the time last year, we had three individuals that were injured or suffered some form of illness, and unfortunately, they were on extended... they were out of work for an extended period of time. It was recommended to me by Mr. Vandewali to hire a temporary firefighter to offset the shortage of manpower. So we did hire a temporary firefighter, if you will, and he was subsequently released April 1st, once we were back at full staffing. Additionally, we had some senior firemen that left the city and actually moved on to other departments, and that brought some of the salaries down.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, does this budget reflect a fully salaried assistant fire chief?
No, counsel McGregor, it was never programmed into the proposed budget.
Thank you.
Leslie?
Yeah, I'd like to start, and I know this is, you know, a difficult thing for everybody, because the practical matter is that we need to have more money for streets and drainage, and it has to come from somewhere. So we need to make, you know, some cuts. We've been talking about this for some time. We haven't been able to do it, because we were not permitted to do it before tonight. In the Police Department, we have one position.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Please first. Do you meet me?
Go ahead.
Point of order, we're only looking right now of Mr. Rapley's recommendation for reallocation. This is the only thing we're looking at at this time. I'll be making other motions, but right now, we're only looking at these items.
So you want to make another motion?
No, this is the motion to accept what Mr. Rapley has put down in the recommendation for reallocation.
Okay. So you want to vote on it?
Yes, ma'am, that's what this is about.
Call for the vote.
There's other people who'd like to speak. Call denied. McLean?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for our city attorney, and this has to do with the... our code of ordinances for the city of Castle Hills in section 18-24, which says regular firefighter positions, and it says that the fire department shall consist of at least 20 regular or fully...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, this is not part of the recommendation for reallocation as put what Mr. Rapley has proposed.
Yes, it is. It's as to the assistant fire chief's salary.
No, it isn't.
Yes, it is.
You want to reword that, Ms. McLean?
This has to do with the assistant fire chief position that is part of the reallocation request. It's my understanding, under our code of ordinances, that 18-24 requires that the city have at least 20 regular or fully paid positions, that the city council may create additional positions by ordinance at any time, that one of those positions shall be that of a fire chief and one that of an assistant fire chief. This has not been funded in our budget, and my question is, if we adopt a budget that doesn't fund something that our ordinances require, what is the legal ramification to us for not doing so?
Councilwoman, if you'd like, we can go into a closed session, and I can provide the council with legal advice related to this matter.
I would like that very much, please.
So done.
So if you'd like to go into closed session, you just announced that you're going into closed session under 551.071 of the Government Code, and announce the time.
I'll read that off.
But it was my understanding this was not the fire chief's salary. This was salary set up.
Well, beside that, we can't talk about him in open session.
But we can talk about his motion, that's the problem. We're voting on something else.
Mayor, just for clarification, I think the previous budget workshop we provided a historical of the last 10 years of all employees, and the assistant fire chief was not budgeted 2015, 2016. Again, as Chief Dover said, in 2017, that's when it was in the budget for those dollars. In 2018, it was not budgeted.
Hang on.
And my question is, I want to know legally, as an alderman for this city, whether I am violating some law by approving a budget that does not fund something our ordinances require.
And it has been suggested by our paid attorney that we can go into executive session, which we can do.
Can we take a vote on that?
Yes, we can. It's written on the agenda.
Even if it's not written on the agenda, if there is an item on the agenda that council wishes to go into closed session and get legal advice, you may do so.
Okay.
So we can take a vote on whether we wish to?
Or can the mayor call that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Is it a council vote, or is it a mayor's decision?
I don't, you all don't need to vote to go into closed session.
Okay. Okay, it's mayor's decision, we're gonna go into executive council. Executive. I don't have to read it, he just said. Okay. We're gonna go into executive session, it is now 8:19.
And for, and for purpose of the record, it's under 551.071 of the government code.
Okay. You got that many? It is now 8:19. Would you like to, how you wanna do this? You want to us go into the-
Can you comment?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Let's come back into regular session now. And it is now eight forty-one. Oh, it's right here on my phone. Okay, we've just come back from executive session at eight forty-one. Paul?
Acton, we're now in open session.
We are now in open session. Thank you, Paul. Okay, so we left off with Ms. McGlynn's entry into the discussion. So if you don't mind, we're just going to pick up there and kind of go this way and then we'll come back, okay?
All right. I have no other questions about the items that were listed to Paul.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
My only concern about the reallocation is that's the only funds available to fund a possible assistant fire chief. So that's why I wanted to make sure that we discussed that while we were discussing these reallocated funds and how they're going to be spent rather than just approving them to all go back to a general fund, which would end up in streets and drainage.
Okay. In other words, what she said is make sure those funds are specific to the assistant fire chief and not go back into the funds. As far as the vote is concerned, I would think that'd have to be done by amendment to the motion. But that's just me. Go ahead. Mr. McCormick?
Don't we have an amendment to the motion?
Not yet.
If not, I guess I'll make one that we allocate the $57,000 for the excess fire department salary to the fire department for purposes of paying an assistant fire chief.
Okay. We have a motion on the table by Mr. McCormick. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Do we have any discussion before we pass the amendment to the motion? Go ahead.
Is that sufficient funding to hire an assistant fire chief? Could you find one for $57,000?
Currently, that's less than what my captains make.
So what is the current average salary for an assistant fire chief looking at comparable cities?
I would have to get a current salary survey. What I had originally proposed was a salary of $70,000, which was put in place by Chief Riedel when he made the recommendation prior to me becoming chief.
Okay, so the $70,000 that you're requesting is actually several years old. So it's maybe not the most current, but it would be adequate for now.
Yeah, I feel it would be adequate now, comparable to similar positions. I'd have to get you better figures, better numbers.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that if we were going to amend this, that we made it a competitive salary. So thank you for answering that question. And Mr. McCormick, would you consider changing that from 57 to 70,000?
I'll amend the proposed amendment to include $70,000 plus whatever funds Mr. Ramplefield's are appropriate for benefits be transferred from the total funds available for reallocation towards funding the position of an assistant fire chief.
Okay. We have a motion on the table by Mr. McCormick to fund the assistant fire chief at $70,000 a year plus benefits.
This is for the coming year, not for now.
That's what we're talking about, the 2019 budget.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second by Ms. Scott. All in discussion? Anyone else? Douglas? Anyone else? Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Any abstains? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay.
So that amended the original motion to accept the reallocation of the approved budget?
That's correct. And then we're on the discussion going around and we should wind that up here pretty quick. Did you have any questions or anything to add to the original motion, Ms. Scott?
No, but I would like to make a motion to accept the reallocation at $261,334,000, which would be what he had minus the $70,000 for assistant chief to go ahead and approve that.
And can I offer a friendly amendment to your amendment?
Sure.
That we designate those excess funds to streets and drainage.
I believe that's already in our code that we have to. Anything $400,000 or less that's excess in general fund has to go to streets and drainage.
Yes.
So I don't think we need to specify it. It's already going there.
Correct. I think the budget already reflects that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. So we have a motion on the table for...go ahead.
Oh, to allocate the remainder of the reallocation funds of $261,334 to the general fund.
Okay. Do we have a second for that?
A second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that? Skip, you okay?
I'm fine.
All right. Y'all two okay? Ms. Winger? Nope. Douglas? You're okay? Okay. This is, from what I understand, a roll call vote. Is that correct, Paul? So it's written that way on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Let's start with a roll call vote in position one. Mr. McCormick?
Aye.
Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Winger?
Aye.
Mr. Gregory?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. We have a budget and it was amended accordingly to include the assistant fire chief for 2019.
We don't have a budget.
Not quite yet, Mr. Mayor.
We voted on the motion.
We just voted on the reallocation funds, that's all.
So you can vote on the budget now with...subject to the reallocation by record vote.
That's what I read on item number...oh, I see. Okay, we did four first. You're right. Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to move a motion in the police department. The police department has had, since 2009, one CID individual for a sergeant. In 2009, it had zero CID patrolmen. In 2010, it had one CID sergeant and two CID patrolmen. However, in order to do that, they reduced the number of patrolmen on the street from 10 to nine. And that has held steady all the way through. I'm of a motion to eliminate one CID sergeant and to increase one CID patrolman. I think it's more important to have patrolmen on the street at this time than having an abundance of CID officers.
Sorry, Mr. Gregory, I don't understand your motion.
I'd like to amend that.
Paul?
There's no second.
He made a motion. He was the original one. Now she wants to amend the motion? Doesn't he have to back off and then redo the motion?
Yes, and I don't believe it was seconded either.
No second. Calling for a second. Do I have a second on Douglas's motion?
I'm afraid I don't understand Douglas's motion enough.
The motion...
Remember, that doesn't understand Douglas's motion.
The motion, simply put, in order to get two CID officers back in 2010, they went and reduced the number of patrolmen on the street from 10 to nine in order to have a second, a two patrolmen in CID. My motion is to reduce that...well, that's what the thing is right here, right here in black and white.
I see it.
My motion is to reduce the number of CID patrolmen from two to one and increase the number of patrolmen from nine to 10. In other words, a full-time patrolman versus a full-time CID officer.
You're taking one of the CID people and making a street patrolman out of them, is that right?
I am...we're eliminating one officer, yes, because that's originally, we had 10 patrolmen. Now we have nine. I'm saying let's return to 10 patrolmen. And since we have, I think we have three CID officers right now, to reduce that from three to two. Therefore, you have more patrolmen on the street.
Are you doing the second?
No, I have a question.
Well, hang on. Please. Do we have a second to that motion? To take one CID away from the category and turn him into a patrol officer? I'll ask one more time. Do we have a second for that motion? Dies for lack of a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Paul, because that is a question that would involve salary and the changes, should we go back into executive session, sir?
No.
Calculated.
It involves salary, Leslie, and involves...would y'all quit talking over there?
Sure. If y'all need, if y'all have need me to answer a question, a legal issue of the calculations, I think.
Well, if we're talking about cutting an employee and we're talking about putting him into another position, I would hope to God we would at least let him know how much he's going to make when we're doing it. And that's an employee question.
We can go into closed session regarding that.
Executive session.
Five five one.
Can I ask a question?
Under five five one, point oh seven one.
Under five five one? Would y'all cut it out? Y'all want some time? Well, go ahead. Let's hear it in public.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Under five five one, what?
Point oh seven one of the Texas government code.
Five five oh one, point seven one, the Texas government code. We're calling an executive session at eight fifty to discuss the item of reducing a CID officer to patrolman and discuss...
We can go in for legal advice related to the budget. That's all you need to announce.
That's what we need. Thank you. Thank you.
They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
Yes, sir.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount. How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount. How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount. How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount. How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount. How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount. How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount. How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount. How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question.
If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question. If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question. If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question. If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question. If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question. If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question. If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question. If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
Who said it was illegal? They have to do it. They wouldn't have voted for that if you didn't say it was illegal. That's the only reason. No, it was copies I was going to give. Yeah, I do now that we're going in there. Yeah, that's a good question. If the CID patrolman and patrolman are basically paid the same amount.
How much time is it? How long is it? Stay by the door for me.
You've still got that third person to make up the caseload of. It's now no longer there. It's gonna be a half of person per detective that you have left up there to make that up. You get their original twenty-eighty, plus the additional time to make up that half person that individual detective is taking the slack up for, and that's at time and a half, councilman, because they're already at their forty a week.
I'd like to go back to two or three slots, slides two or three further back in the other direction.
Yes, sir.
It was up there, and then it, keep going.
I was gonna come back to it, but, yes, sir.
Now, I found it interesting that the DA prosecuted took cases of all these cases coming in is lower than it was in twenty sixteen, even though we have, and even the number of cases has dropped by four hundred. So this says to me that we have fewer total cases.
No, sir, we're still, we're still in two thousand and eighteen. We haven't, we're gonna be right around twelve hundred. You do the math on it. We'll be at twelve hundred, and so it'll be, it'll be negligible. It'll be within fifty or a hundred of the last couple of years.
And we're only, we're prosecuting, you think, will equal what we did in twenty sixteen?
It'd be very close, yes, sir. If we stay, if we, our current trends stay the same, and I see no reason why they wouldn't, it'll be almost identical, thirty-five to forty percent, which is an extremely high amount.
So what happened to the other two-thirds cases?
Well, half of them don't have a cooperating victim or didn't reach the level of, of the elements of the offense required by the prosecution. But I will, I will submit to you, that thirty-five and forty, sir, is an extremely high amount to go to the DA's office. We reached out to them. They don't keep conviction rates for individual suburbs. They only keep them for SAPD and Bear County. All the rest of us get lumped into a group. But what they did say, or did suggest, is that that prosecute, that investigated case rate at the DA's office is extremely high. We're still waiting to hear back from a Texas Ranger and some other folks on what they think an average, an average prosecution load is, but we're estimating eighteen to twenty percent for most agencies. It's extremely high. It's caliber of work, quality of work. It's getting, it's, it's not letting somebody be a victim a second time, because we're finding, we're getting, we're putting people in jail.
And remember, they plea out and things like that, too.
That's right, all kinds of things happen.
They plea out. I mean, they, they can prove something, and then they plea out up here, the judge gives them, so they're not just let go because they didn't do their job.
No, oftentimes, oftentimes, they go down with three or four charges, councilman, and they drop the bottom three to get the best charge. So, I mean, that's some of what you're seeing in there. It's a high rate, sir. I assure you, it's a high rate. And I challenge you, not in a bad way, I challenge you in a positive way. Talk to your constituents, or not your constituents, your cohorts, your, your colleagues around the, the city, these thirty-three other suburbs that you have access to, these other council folks, they're not, their PDs aren't doing this work. I'm not saying anything bad about them. They're just not working this many cases.
Well, I will say that I've tramped around this city probably more than almost anybody up here. You'd think I'd be smaller, thinner, too. But I find it interesting with the, with the increase of traffic, it, it obviously is going through the city. With the increase of traffic, the number of cases hasn't increased really at all since two years back, and the number of prosecuted cases is basically stymied. This is the reason, that is one reason, because it, it doesn't belie your figure that things are growing. It just is in the recent past and not growing at all. It just strikes me that, in that flat figure here, I'd like to, I'd really think we could do better having more people on the street than prosecuting, than having cases when two-thirds of the cases aren't even prosecuted. And I know it's a high figure of thirty to forty percent. So it would be I, I don't know why we ever went down in the first place.
Why we what, sir?
I don't know why we ever went down from ten to nine in the first place. But I think we ought to go up to ten again. And since there's no change in salary, you have a no change in the system, and you may actually get better service because you have more cops on the street.
You're not, you're gonna have victims that don't get their cases worked. Yes, ma'am.
Actually, there would be an effect, because with the slide you just showed us is that when they're working, the
I'm going there.
Well, I'll let you make the point, that it's gonna be more expensive to have two.
It is gonna cost more in overtime, unfunded liability, or, and/or comp time, the same, in that one individual's gonna end up working, and this is not on-call overtime, this is just making up the missing person. Three thousand, six hundred and forty hours, same for the second one, for a total of seven thousand, two hundred and eighty combined hours. Subtract what the sixty-two forty was with three detectives in there, and you're paying a thousand and forty dollars more in CT or unfunded liability. Because we can't, we can't decrease the level of service that victims of this city, the citizens, are expected to and have become accustomed to. I think you're right. I think that we can, we have begun to supplement patrol with our power shift, and it was very effective, sir, when we did it.
But it's not a decrease in service.
No, sir.
You are having more people on patrol. That is an increase in service.
In one service, it'll decrease the other, the victimization on the other end.
Well-
You can't. You can't take, you can't decrease it. I'm not saying you can't decide as a council to do so. I'm saying you can't mathematically, you can't decrease an area that's working, that's redlined, and expect it to provide the same service. You just can't do it.
You mean the same result, not the same service?
Same result for some. It might be a worse result for others when their case just gets tabled, because the yard gnome doesn't reach the level of the sexual assault to get work. Now, we're not doing it. New Braunfels is a perfect example. They're no longer, I think, working misdemeanors of any type. Folks aren't happy with that. Our folks deserve better. That's not a trend we wanna, we wanna follow. We don't have to yet. That's, we're not there. And I'll go further. I know this was an area of contention with some of you, and I agree it is. I think that we should, we should supplement the HIDA salary from Crime Control and not the General Fund. But you gotta allow the operation to go forward like, like it is, or it's gonna be, it's gonna, there's gonna be an effect and a negative one at that.
Wait a minute. Crime Control, I don't think allows that.
It does. It allows it for, if it's for drug programs and the such. The statute's pretty clear on them.
That went by real quick. I didn't understand what you said.
Yes, sir. There's, the statute supports use for drug, for pro, law enforcement programs. The program, the officer that we have in that position is working for HIDA, which is a law enforcement drug program.
So you're saying the Crime Control Prevention District, which, could they fund the CID office, patrolman?
I don't think so. It's about as lean as it gets with all the allocated funds.
But I mean, if you had sufficient funds, could they, could they fund the CID patrolman?
I think you would compromise the reserves that we like to keep the parallel.
It wasn't my question. Can the CID fund
Oh, I understand, statutorily.
The CCPD, all these numbers, you're right, all these letters.
I don't know if that would qualify, that would be a legal question. I see what you're asking. Because it's not necessarily a program at that point. Where HIDA is a program. It's a federal program for drug enforcement.
Just a point of clarification. That budget's not before the council today. I understand it's kind of ancillary to this, but I just wanted to keep you all on top.
Can I get the city, the city secretary to read the motion back, please? Governor Gregory motion. Do you go ahead and DM one CID service division?
No. Yeah, patrolman.
There is no patrolman. It's investigator.
No, you requested to, to reduce one CID
Patrolman.
Patrolman.
And increase one patrolman.
There is no CID patrolman.
Yes, there is, right there.
Sir, I think we'd be better served with us working, moving forward with filling the vacant slot that you see on patrol.
Well, can we go ahead and move on?
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I'm just trying to satisfy council with their questions. Yes.
So I'd like to call for the vote.
You're not going to. That's denied.
I think I'm gonna withdraw my second. I don't understand what the heck's going on here. I withdraw my second.
Okay. Second withdrawn. Okay.
All right.
So now we're ready for the next motion?
Sure.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna go back to where I started before. Again, it's not an enjoyable thing to do, but we need to have money for our street and drainage repairs, and this is where we get it from. So I'm recommending that we cut two CID, I thought they were called investigators, if they're called patrolmen, so be it. And the reason for that is that I have been asking for some time, including two meetings that I had with Johnny recently, to get information on how this work affects the citizens who live here. And you just referenced that we should talk to our constituents, so that's exactly what I've been doing.